I'd like to call the City of Silent Springs Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 11th to order. Mr. Phillips, roll call please.
Song? Montgomery?
Here.
Sally?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Colvin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January 14th. We've all received copies of. I hear any additions, deletions, corrections that need to be made. There being none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
And a second. All approved, voice vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item on the agenda is development approve, development permit approval for rezoned development permit, RZ 2001, 700 to 1,000 block of Highway 16. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. Before you is a rezoning permit located at 700 to 1,000 block of Highway 16. The request is to rezone an R2 property consisting of 29.6 acres to PD, stands for Plan Development. The PD zone will allow for multi-family and single-family housing and a large common area park in between. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant is proposing three distinct areas, you see designated on the image on the right. Area one is intended for single-family housing on slightly smaller lots than what's normally permitted in the R2 zone. Area two is shown to be the location of a future multi-family. And finally, area three is designated as open space for a park. The park will be maintained by POA to be established at the time of the development of the property. The map you see is intended to be a conceptual design. The applicant will have to come back before the city, the planning commission and the board for a preliminary plat and a significant development permit for the apartment or multi-family dwellings. So what's unique with the PD zone is that the developer can set their customized standards. We see that shown on the left. So some notable differences here include decreased minimum lot surface area from 7,000 square feet to 6,000. And this is a difference between the R2 zone to their proposed PD. The lot width is reduced by 10 feet from 60 feet down to 50 feet. The lot coverage has increased by 5% and this is going up to 45% allowed. And the floor area ratio has increased by 5% to .45. If you're not familiar with floor-to-area ratio, what that is, is it's taking the total area of square feet of the lot and dividing that by the total square footage of the proposed house. So for instance, if you had a house that was 5,000 square feet and that was on a 5,000 square foot lot, that would equal an FAR of 1.0. So that's just something to keep in mind, a lot of people aren't familiar with the FAR rules. Finally, because the side setbacks are changing, the applicant is also changing their landscape buffer on that side to five feet to match the five-foot setback for the houses. So with area two, this is the area that's on the north side of the project where the multi-family is proposed. A notable code change includes adding a few more use units for lower-density family housing and small institutions, increases to the side setbacks to better be in line with the R4 zone law, and increasing FAR up to 65%. This is to permit two-story apartment buildings if so desired. And then finally, this area is the park designed to buffer the single-family uses to the south from the multi-family uses to the north. The future residents of both area one and two will be able to use the park as part of the development. The park will contain a walking trail as well as a playground in the center. And you show the playground right here. And the standards have not been changed, however, they are, the use is restricted to only structures that are primarily for public recreation, so no houses or commercial buildings will be allowed in this particular area. So because this is a rezoning request, I'm displaying the future land use map for this area. We can see the variety of housing densities are shown, both high-density and medium-density family. The high-density family allows for up to 30 units per acre, but you can see that from the proposed zoning, the actual built density will be considerably less than that, set at 16 units per acre for area two and 60 units per acre for area one. The red darker shading shown in the northwest corner, I'll circle that right there, is a buffering from Highway 412 to benefit the commercial businesses that are located there if they wanted to expand to the south. Because none of these businesses own the land, it's not feasible for them to utilize this area, so staff is supportive of this proposal for all residential uses. And staff has not heard any comments from the neighboring businesses concerning this proposal. And then finally, this is the site looking to the north, taken a little bit of a month ago. The neighborhood to the left here, this is East Gate. And you can see that there is a stubout street, I'll circle that right there, built into the subject property. The completed, the plan is to complete this connection so that East Gate will ultimately have a street that will tie into Highway 16. And that will be going through area one, the single-family part of the development. You can see also that similar multi-family uses already exist to the north, so it makes sense to propose the multi-family located there so those uses are together. Staff is recommending approval of this PD zone with its standards, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission? Please state your name and address, please.
Jesse Fulcher, 1750 North Buckley in Fayetteville. Thank you, Ben. I think Ben pretty much covered everything, but maybe just to give a little background on it, again, appreciate the commission's time and hearing our rezoning request. What really drove this proposal was the land uses adjacent to the property. As Ben noted, to the northeast is an existing apartment complex and really some intensive commercial uses there along the northwest side of the property. As we move down, we've got a single-family development there to the west, and then we have some attached smaller units kind of in the southwest portion of our property. And so we really tried to mirror that in a transition and take that multi-family from the north end and then continue down into the south end with single-family to be compatible with those existing residences to our west. The park area is kind of this bridge between the two of how do we transition from taller buildings, two- and three-story apartment buildings down to, you know, one- and two-story single-family homes. A park area was a great way to do that, provides a great amenity, not for the homes, not for the apartments, but for everybody within the community. The standards we have on the single-family homes, again, trying to remain compatible with the existing residences, so the 60-foot wide lots are all on the exterior of our boundary, so along the west side adjacent to the existing neighborhood, and then on the south side are all 60-foot wide lots by 120-foot depth. The smaller lots where you see the 50-foot standard are all interior to our subdivision, so again, trying to create that transition down into our own development. As far as the multi-family building layout, the most important thing was to locate those along the street, to try to put that parking in behind all of those buildings. So you'll note there along 16, we've got two of our structures there along the street, and we try to feed in the parking lot behind that, again, to make the buildings the focus of the development and not the parking lot. Again, Ben did a great job kind of going through the future land use map. We feel it's a great project, it's compatible with the adjacent land uses, and consistent with a comprehensive land use plan as far as the intensity map that was shown, so we're hoping for the commission's support tonight. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to address the commission in regards to this project? There being none, end of the public comment time, anyone on the commission wish to comment or have questions on this project?
Yes, sir, good question. We spoke about that about staff. It will not be a city-owned and operated park, so it'll have to be privately maintained and owned by the developer. Exactly. It'll be, it'll be part of, depending on how we layer it, typically with just single-family be part of the POA, but with the multi-family component, it may be stacked in there, but the owner of the properties, whether it be the POA or the owner of the apartment areas, will be responsible for maintaining it. We'll make sure we've got CCRs or maintenance documents for staff to have.
It will be open for the public to use, is that what you were saying?
Well, it's, what I was implying is that this isn't a park for the people that have a single-family home, or a park for the people that are renting an apartment, but it's for both of them. However, I'm sure if somebody walked up the street that we're connecting to and went into the park to play, that's going to happen as well.
Any other questions from the commissioners? There being none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve RZ 2001.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Phillips.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Song?
Motion approves goes to the Board of Directors on March 3rd, 2020. Next item on the agenda is significant development permit, SD 20-01 at 3,600 South Lincoln. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. For your second review item, you're looking at a significant development permit for a new 9275 square foot bunkhouse at Camp Siloam. This is located at 3,600 South Lincoln Street. So here is a site plan showing the proposed structure. As the staff report stated, the existing bunkhouse was damaged on October 21st, 2019 by a tornado. The proposed structure replaces this damaged structure. It will be located at southwest of the new dining hall building that was finished a few years ago that you see in the picture right here. And as you can see, based off of the context in this area, there will be ample pedestrian access, and parking is handled by the front parking area by the camp offices. Here you see a proposed south elevation. The building will be one story as shown. Construction will be stained wood siding and a rock base, and the roof will be a pre-finished seamed metal roof. And here's what the project will look like when overlaid on aerial photo. It will be on the south side of the creek, if you guys are familiar with the park, the area down there. There are four smaller cabins that will be taken down to make way for this facility. And you can see, finally, of course, this is the site looking to the east, Highway 59, located right there. So they can see the four cabins I mentioned, those are right there, that will be removed. Landscaping is accredited based off of the existing tree canopy and forest vegetation for the project. Staff is recommending approval, no conditions needed, and we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wishes to address the commission? Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm Jason Wilkie. I live at 3598 South Lincoln Street here in Silent Springs, and as Ben mentioned, we experienced that tornado on October 21st and a tree fell through one of our existing bunkhouses. Luckily, nobody was there, nobody was hurt, but it pretty much totaled the building. And that's a loss of 125 beds for us and significant revenue for this summer for the camp. And so our board voted October, I'm sorry, December, in our December board meeting to go ahead and start construction as soon as possible, with the hope of reclaiming some of those beds this summer and not losing capacity, but chances of getting it done by June 7th when camp opens is probably pretty slim, but we're going to shoot for it as best we can. And I just want to tell you that your planning department has been super to work with. Ben and Brian and Randall just have been great, walking me through each step and understanding our circumstances and just really, really helping us. So thank you guys for your help. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to address the commission? There being none, will be the end of the public comment period. Anyone from the commission have a question? Or concern? There being none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve significant development 20-01?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Phillips.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion approved goes to the Board of Directors on March 3rd, 2020. Next item on the agenda will be code amendments, code update, Chapter 54. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission, Ben Rhodes. I'm going to cover both of those items right now in the presentation. If you have any questions on anything, we'll just ask at the end. So the, so the first for your consideration is an update to the final plat process in Chapter 54. As you recall from the joint workshop held with the Board of Directors last December, the city administrator asked for feedback on the possibility of allowing final plats to go straight to the board in cases where the final plats are identical to a corresponding preliminary plat application. So the proposed code change still will do that, will require the plats to go to, straight to the board, but it will still require a legal notice to be done, and also exempts cases where the final plat is the first review by the city, or in cases where the final plat differs from what was approved in the preliminary plat. So for cases where the final plat is new to the city, what I mean by that is when you have a large tract of land that is being split into multiple lots, but they are not proposing any infrastructure or any street improvements, anything like that, so it would just be strictly a plat, a subdivision plat, where they would create the lots. Because the commission wouldn't be offered an opportunity to see something brand-new like that, we would still have those go to the commission and to the board like what we do right now. But anything else that requires a preliminary plat, the final plat would bypass the commission, go straight to the board directors. So that covers what we're changing on the final plats. The second proposed code change restricts the private sale of automobiles in non-commercial zones to match state requirements, limiting to no more than five sales per the previous 12 months. This change updates the use unit descriptions and the zoning code to cover this particular enterprise. In cases where there are to be more than five sales, the retailer will need to be located in a commercial zone. We have also required that all sales of RVs be restricted to, particularly to commercial zone districts. Staff is supportive of both of these code changes, and we stand by for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. First item to discuss from the presentation will be for Chapter 54, the land use, and regarding the final plats. Do the commissioners have any questions of Ben or concerns? Being none, do I have a motion in regards to whether we approve this and send it to the Board of Directors?
So moved.
Have a motion? And a second? Mr. Phillips?
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion to approve the code change passes, and we'll go to the Board of Directors. The second item in the discussion was update to the zoning code in regards to auto sales. Commissioners have any questions of Mr. Rhodes?
Ben, I need to ask you a question, and I don't know whether this is the place to ask it or not. I think as all of us drive up and down Cherry Whitlock, there is a residential, and I'm not sure whether anyone lives in that house or not, but I know they sure do a lot of mechanical work, and there's sure a lot of cars out there that's got for sale signs on them. Is there, is that going to affect that type of zoning?
Potentially.
What this is doing now, is this changing what we, ordinance that we currently have on that?
It is changing our current ordinances. So what we're doing, just to put it in a different way, is, you know, we have the use units that define what is allowed in each zone, they're like the building blocks of each zone district. And so rather than just saying generally, commercial is allowed as a use unit, we're going into more particulars by stating what type of commercial is permitted or not permitted. So by calling out a specific thing, that by default eliminates it in all the other zones because you're saying that only, it's only allowed in that particular use unit. And since those particular use units are only allowed in commercial zones, it, then that activity would automatically be prohibited in all the other zone districts. So what we're saying is that we're restricting to no more than five sales in the previous 12 months, so obviously this would be, had to be enforced by code enforcement, they would have to be keeping track of these sales and whatnot, what they can see. And if they start seeing, exceed that amount, they're going to be, of course, they'll be going through code enforcement, but they would be asked to, you know, cease operations at that site until either enough time elapses for them to resume again meeting these regulations, or they would have to go to a commercial zone district like a regular pre-owned vehicle sales lot, that type of thing. So...
My next question, if I could interrupt you right here.
Yeah.
Is there any grandfather clause in this? The were, if there's a place where, well geez, city, I've been doing this here since my grandpa started doing it?
That's a good question. I probably would have to confer with the attorney on that, the reason being is that usually you apply something like, something being grandfathered in to some type of physical improvement or something that physically doesn't comply with the zone, like if you pass a new setback and now that the house is over its required setback amount. With this being more of a fluid, are they selling, are they not selling? I mean, it would be harder to determine whether it falls, what would fall under that status of protection or not. So I don't know if I want to fur that over to Jay to comment on it.
No, I'll just say that, as written, no, this doesn't include any sort of provision for ongoing sales. I mean, if that's going on now, it would, it would have to stop after this was passed.
Thank you for that clarity.
Like we was talking about earlier, like as Mr. Rhodes said, it's, this brings the city in line with state changes. Is there any other?
Are we tracking sales?
I can't speak to what's been done in the past. I do know that once this is on the books, this will be something that will have to be looked at by code enforcement. Yeah.
Would they require a permit or something along those lines for individuals that plan to sell a vehicle?
Well, it wouldn't be permitting per se, it would be more of a visual survey, so as you drive around, you see vehicles maybe for sale on a lot. And again, I don't want to speak for code enforcement's operations, how they do things, but I would imagine that the officer would note the address, the date, and, you know, the number of vehicles, that type of thing, and if it becomes a recurring issue, then they would have the evidence within their, their patrols to, you know, then say, okay, this is now in violation or not. So it would probably be based off of visual data than anything that would be permitted, because we wouldn't be permitting this. This is, this is just done as, you know, one would have a vehicle they want to sell, and they put the for sale tag or sticker on the vehicle in front of their house. You know, currently, that's not a permitted activity that, you know, they have to get a business license or anything like that for, so, yeah.
But, but Ben, let me ask you another, being a devil's advocate. Back when I was active within the iron business or in the automobile business, if I went to an auction and bought some vehicles, titled them, put them in my driveway, or put them in my neighbor's driveway, or my friend's driveway on the other side of town, how are you ever going to find out that I sold more than five vehicles?
Again, it would just have to be based off of visual surveys. I mean, I can't speak to what people may or may not do as a result of this ordinance, this is what we're, right now, we have nothing. You have to understand, there's no regulation at all. So this is just an attempt to try to put some type of regulatory framework in place.
Pretty much as a nutshell, as with some other codes that the city deals with, until something is adopted and you have a tool, you can't do anything about it.
And I will also speak to that just briefly. I think what this is intended to address is just the active sales where, like I said, people are putting, you know, multiple vehicles in the yards and where they're, you know, the blatant advertising, where they're having people come there and inspecting the vehicles and doing the test driving, and doing all the things that are normally associated, you know, with a vehicle sales lot. And, you know, what you're talking about where you may have some vehicle, you know, a vehicle or two, you know, parked in your yard, and maybe all the sales are going on over the internet, and it's not bringing in the traffic and the people, and the sort of thing that would detract from the residential properties of the neighborhood, that's probably going to come to the city's attention, and, you know, so like I said, probably wouldn't ever trigger this, you know, this ordinance or code enforcement. But, you know, what this is intended to get to, like I said, is the kind of activities that detract from the residential properties of the neighborhood, and that's what they're going to be looking for.
It's like at my pet peeve property on Cherry.
Well, right, yeah. So I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions from commissioners? Do we have a motion in regards to recommendations to the Board of Directors?
I move, uh, move to accept the recommended changes and as presented by staff.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Phillips?
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Colvin?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve goes to the Board of Directors. No other items on the agenda? Do any of the commissioners have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just state that I should have put it on the agenda, it is March 3rd.
I wondered.
As the actual date, yeah. Yeah, March 3rd for both of these ordinances.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second? And a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.